I think we're close enough. We don't want to have that picture. The Potter County Commissioners Court this morning, the 22th of December 2014. And first of all, due to this accident, Commissioner Church, if you would take a special place with the fire.
Mighty God, we thank you for all the wonderful gifts that you've given us. Especially this time of year, Christmas. Wonderful gift of your son, Jesus Christ. We pray for all of our families as we get together this week. We pray that they have joy and happiness. We pray for their safe travels. Want to give thanks for our law enforcement officers, for our firemen, all our first responders. Want them to know that during this time, when most of us will be with our families, we appreciate everything they do to work overtime and help us to be safe. Ask you to give our leaders, our national leaders, the strength and wisdom to appreciate all police officers. We pray for the families of those two officers in New York who were murdered this past weekend. We ask you today that you look over us, give us wisdom, give us patience, so that we can do the work that is pleasing in your eyes. We ask all these things through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. United States of America, consider it public for which it stands, one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, our legislative district in Texas, one state and one government, one individual.
Item one on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the December 8 meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve of the minutes in December 8. All those in favor, show hands. That's is four zero. Item two is the vouchers, and is to consider and act upon the approval of payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office for the period of December 3, 2014 to December 16, 2014, and total public checks of 1-5-9-5-5-0 through 1-5-9-8-2-5, and wire number 4-7-4 through 4-8-0, totaling the amount of $2,953,238. Let's say it this way, okay, it's been motion to approve and seconded to approve vouchers as stated, no疑问. Questions?
Do you have a couple of questions for the court? Page five of forty, check number 1-5-9-6-0-1 in the amount of $76.60, card services, Visa, late fee, interest. Here, do you want to put that?
I'm not sure what circumstances were coming up, but obviously we were late making the payment, and it could be checks in the mail, a lot of times we would have issues with that.
Pat, do you know anything in reference to that late charge interest?
Yes, ma'am, that bill got buried on my desk.
Strap your record in.
Pardon me, sir.
My next question is page 21 of forty, check number 1-5-9-7-9-2, the amount of $3,894 SolarWinds IT. Jason, can you help me understand what department that network is for?
That's the renewal on our network monitoring software, our handle renewal line.
And then a follow-up question, page 22 of forty, check number 1-5-9, oh, I'm sorry, check number 1-5-9-7-9-6, Spillman Technologies, it's falling under fire and rescue. Did we discuss through this budget year that the IT maintenance, software maintenance would come out of the IT department and not the actual departments, or is this different?
This is actually the purchase in its paper underwriting.
Okay, perfect. All right. So the questions I have for.
Okay, questions have been posed and asked and answered. Motion on the floor to see and accept the vouchers as stated, all in favor, show hands. That's is four one. Item number three, the budget amendments, to consider and act upon budget amendments for fiscal year 2014 to 2015.
I just have one question, Carrie, on page three, item five. It looks like there's a request to transfer some money from the Justice Court Technology Fund, 10,000, into education and travel. I'm assuming that's a travel event that fits under that category, but I did want to confirm that.
This is actually something that should be in the original budget. We've been mentioned 10,000 per year and failed to do it in the budget.
Thank you.
Second motion. Okay, the move and second to approve of the budget amendments, any questions? Okay, those in favor, show hands. That's is five zero. Item four is the insurance report, and is to recognize the insurance fund report. Anything you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Okay. So, recognize, item number five, the treasury report, and is to recognize the monthly treasury report, the annual.
Well, as you know, this is our busy time of year, our stressful time of year for almost a month. I wanted to bring you up to date as far as our general fund cash this morning, we have 12.2 million. The concern we have at this time of year is we're collateralized at 39 million in Emerald National Bank, and so it's a very fine balance to, when money comes in, to get it out, and still stay collateralized and not go over our limit. So, this morning, we have 35.9 million there, and so it's pretty close. We've still got some big ones coming in, we just had 10 million come in last week. And so, by the time, I mean, we have to wait for the receipts to come in, I'll let Sherri explain that to you. So you kind of see the process, if we can't just move it, it takes a process for that to happen.
I received one of our larger mortgage companies, which was filed 11 million dollars, and I'm going to hit the deposit app, some of the interest over the weekend. But we're still waiting for them to send us the reports on which accounts we're supposed to post to. This is done electronically, as soon as we get it, we'll run it and we're done. Those funds, hopefully if we get it today, it will be dispersed tomorrow. We're also anticipating getting Emerald National Bank's payments, which will be about another 7 million dollars, especially this week. And again, we have to wait till we can get it posted and then distributed to the different entities. In the meanwhile, Lynn kind of panics because I could cause problems for her, but we can try to get it dispersed and out of that account, just to put this process.
And we really work well together. They have 14.2 million in their account this morning, but we should be able to move some of that today. But we do work very closely together, so appreciate Sherri and her group and trying to stay on top of it, but that's where we are and will be for the next few weeks. But we'll keep up to date as to what's happening right now, all as well, we're just very close together. And she's giving a percentage of?
Right now, we're at 16% collections, probably by the end of this month, it'll be up to 25, 20, 25, 30, once all these mortgage companies.
And how does that compare Sherri to last year?
It's about the same.
Pretty comparable.
We did the majority of our tax money by the end of January, it'll...
Especially the large ones like to wait until last May.
And the individuals.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Statehood, and it's going to make one of the six, and is to act upon the tax refund for overpayment taxes.
This was just an erroneous payment, Wells Fargo, Happy State, sent in several checks with several partners' parcels on there, but they also included one for Randall County. We've got to send that back to them.
I make a motion that we approve the refund in the amount of $5,672.84 issued to Happy State.
Second, case remove and second to approve the amount of issuance of $5,672.84, which is the Happy State bank, those approve.
You may be second on that.
Judge Williams, church, okay.
All those in favor? That's is five zero. Item number seven, we're going to push that back to court again, and we're going to deal with item number eight, the elections, vote centers, and is to consider and act upon a recommendation by the Vote Center Committee of Potter County pursuant to Texas Election Code 43.7007, initiating process to participate in the countywide polling place program, AKA Vote Centers, beginning with the November 2015 election.
Good morning. The Elections Administration and Vote Center Committee are asking for the court to join with the recommendation that the Vote Center Committee made, and saying that Potter County is ready to create a plan and pursue the active use of Vote Centers. What we'll be doing is we'll be creating a Vote Center Advisory Committee that will be made up of stakeholders in our community that have key interests in elections, it'll obviously be open to public, it'll include some of our political entities, our minority groups, and disability groups, really those that have a stake in making a change in this. This group will be doing a lot of the legwork and kind of guiding us as we create a new election structure. What we have now are precincts, and we'll be moving to a Vote Center system where a voter could vote any place in the county, if they're in the right county, and they find the polling place, they're in the right place to vote on election day. It essentially makes one more day of early voting, but with multiple locations. So, we have a plan to do this, the proposal is due to be stayed no later than August 20th, but in a discussion I had with the Secretary of State's office on Friday, we learned that this is kind of a first come, first served basis. There are only six counties over 100,000 population that will be allowed to do a Vote Center for the first time in any given election. And so, if we get our proposal in earlier, then that puts us higher on the list, and they will inform us earlier that we've been accepted, which will help us in the planning and creation. So, we will be planning to exceed, supersede, that August 20 deadline by a couple months if at all possible.
Does that pose any problem or concern you on that, and to track?
No, no, I actually aired out the timeline to end of it August 20th, and now I can type it up to privilege, what's still reasonable.
What's on the hard work and all the hard work and getting all the entities together, both local and the total, as far as the private sector too, as well as getting everyone together to share their thoughts, and she wouldn't be all be on the same team, so it's done very well, great job, and has a move forward to heighten and enhance the Vote Centers.
And I would add and really echo those comments, and I think with the city, and obviously divided by two counties, with Randall County really taking the initiative to start that, I think it really does add a nice framework in terms of what Potter County can do to supplement that. I did want to extend appreciation to our fellow love of commissioners and elections administrators that really took time out of their day to make a complete day of it, to educate the public, and just meet and greet and help the answer questions, so I know that that does take time out of their day, and I'm certainly very appreciative to have that here on our county.
I move that we, Potter County, pursue Vote Centers, Vote Centers, excuse me, and the Potter County Vote Center Committee lead there.
Second, okay, it's been moved and second to move forward with the proposal for Vote Centers, and all those in favor, show hands. That's is five zero.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine is the official bond terms beginning January 1, 2015, is to approve and recognize, or take any action necessary regarding the official bonds for elected officials beginning the term of office on January 1, 2015.
We have two bonds, we have Commissioner Mordecai's, and then we have a JP Debbie Moore, that need to be approved. Commissioner Mordecai's is for $3,000 payable to the treasurer, which is correct, and just the piece, Debbie Moore's for $5,000 payable to the Potter County judge.
We approve the bonds for Commissioner Mordecai and then JP.
Second. Okay, motion going to approve the bonds, a notice for Commissioner Mordecai and for JP Moore, and the amount of Commissioner Mordecai for $3,000, and JP Moore, that was for?
Five.
Five thousand. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, that's is four.
Olive State.
Four, zero, one. Okay. Item number 10 is the Potter County Memorial State and Lease, Southern Independent, and is to hear report on state improvements and taking action necessary in regards to the lease.
I think we met with representatives of the lead on the lease, and went over some of the items as far as the improvements, and I think we're to the point where there's one, there's one question about one invoice as far as improved, electrical improvements that we're still trying to run down. That's about $17,000, I think, in the skid of the lien paid or we paid it. So, you know, it may make a difference as to the amount of improvements done, you know, the lease, I think, but in any event, we expect to have that completed. So, I mean, I'll let the committee, rest of the committee speak, but I think we're in good shape right now, just need to answer, answer a couple of questions, just. And then we'll kind of, there's some other issues we've wanted to discuss going forward that have to do with some maybe modifying lease terms, but that's topic for another day, we're not prepared to go forward with that, but I think we're about to put the issue of improvements to this.
Is it you?
Yeah, I would just add, we certainly committed to meeting with Ms. Tucker really immediately after court, so I think Tuesday, day right after court, we engaged that meeting to walk through the improvements as they were presented, and I know that was an initial concern, but we did walk through them, and again, the one item in question is the lights, the electrical system, invoice is 20,000, so we're just trying to verify who paid that county versus Southern Independent. The amount of total improvements to improve, or for the lease, to fulfill the lease, is 192,000. County, that improvement of 20, that Southern Independent, could have paid, would be 193. So if the county indeed did pay that, what we will do, what we'd like to do is reconvene as a committee and walk through that, and then bring recommendations back to the court.
Mike, can you help us on that, electrical?
Probably say that had to do with some outfield lighting where we made repairs with the electrical.
And we did have, and Carrie, I'll need you to speak to keep me honest here, but we did have an invoice in terms of electrical, but for their line items and what they included as improvements, we wanted to verify, is that the same improvement, or is that a different one that was completed? So I think that was the question on the table, and please correct me if I misstated any of that.
One, excuse me, one other may have been when they built the press box up there, more electric, went out and did all of the electrical in order to reroute the electrical wiring. I believe we did, county paid that out of our bonus.
We didn't go through out of my eyes here, I think, we just had this one, there may have been two different services, and we may have paid for them anyway.
That's a 17,000.
And again, if that's the case, and we find that the county did indeed pay that, what we'd like to do is reconvene as a committee, and then bring that back to the court for discussion.
Okay, so we've heard reported, the action taken is to reconvene committee and found the funding numbers, if I get that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion to approve that process?
I think for now, it was just an update in terms of an update, but certainly they directed.
We don't need a motion for that. So, no疑问, forward. Item number 11, imaging service agreement, is to consider and act upon approving a multi-year agreement with coal mine preservation, preservation of scanning and archiving historical records of the county clerk's office utilizing Texas?
Texan.
Texas.
Contract number Texas contract, dash 13, dash 36010, and the funds will be contended
each year on Commissioners Court for appropriations and availability of County Clerk's Record Archive Funds.
About, I think it was a year ago, y'all approved a project where we had some records from 1972 to 76 scan, and we're almost through getting all of those indexed, and then what we want to do is just a multi-year contract using the same company, and this is paid for when our Records Archive Fund. And the goal is to get all of these records digitized, and so we can eventually move away from film, while also moving away from the microfilm machines that we currently use, because the parts are no longer available, so they're kind of crippling along per se.
Will these records be kept in Dallas, or where will these records be kept?
No, our microfilm is stored in Dallas, so if we had some sort of really bad disaster where we couldn't pull up, you know, where the backup servers aren't working, and we couldn't pull that up, then certainly we would have film to go to.
But the original record is going to be here.
Well, actually, there is a backup server on our Tyler Eagle system for our official public records, where the land records are digitized, yes, there is a backup system for that, we paid for that, it's a disaster recovery.
And they are here.
So we basically have two backups. And of course, every year, once we approve the first time, then every year, we'll have to, I'll have to come back to, or whenever we get a project ready to go, because it will take a budget amendment with the Attorney's Office to transfer that money from our Records Archive Fund. Is that correct?
So Julie, I have a couple of questions on page six, where it speaks to the methodology of this technology. Is this a duplication, or are we gaining any efficiency through that? I mean, is this just another attempt to kind of get another copy, if you will?
No.
Or we'll gain some efficiency?
We will gain efficiency through that, because it will be digitized, so if someone comes to come in and look up their records, I can type in their name, and if they have a date for that property, their name will pop up with that date, instead of having go into the microfilm.
And in terms of where this information will reside, I'm hearing Dallas is where the film will be, but for the digital image of that, you will have direct access to pull that up, should you need that, for anyone who comes in to request that search?
Yes.
Where will that storage and saving, is that on a local server? Will we have storage needs from a technology?
Where's our eagle? The official public records?
It's in the center.
So, as we are moving to more records, will that increase our need for storage space for these to live on, and is that something we need to be preparing for that is an expense outside of what's included in here? Can you provide any estimate of a server for it to reside on?
No, not with any intelligence, no.
Okay.
It's one of those things where, as we move more and more towards digital records, those needs are going to go up, you're going to see that next budget cycle, that we prepare to present.
Didn't we not purchase one this year, Jason?
For the records.
Storage.
Yes.
Our records. And so this will add, this will add to that need, because I'm following you correctly? Okay. And then, based on what I read in here, it's contingent in terms of the funds that you have in your Records Archive, Records Archive account, what is an average balance of that account? Provided a yearly breakout, which I did appreciate from their recap, 143,000, 151, 143, some discounts in there, I just want to make sure there's enough to offset that year to year.
Yes, about 225,000.
And that's a typical average from year to year?
We get anywhere from, yes, we get anywhere from 7,000 to 10,000.
Okay.
A year?
I'm at 7,000 to 10,000.
Okay, great.
That's all the questions.
Any more questions? Fourth, approved. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve of the service agreement with Texas contract, is contended upon each year bringing that appropriations and availability to the District Court. Those in favor, go hands. That's is five zero.
David was able to get him to come down a little bit more, too, so, yeah.
Well, and that's why we're doing a multi-year agreement, because we are receiving that discount by saying we will use that over the next four years, versus bringing this every year individually, so that's kind of the strategy we use.
And Julie, I do appreciate you looking at your Record Archive Funds to offset that, you give for doing that.
Okay, item number 12, formal bid number 1105-14, and is to consider and act upon awarding formal bid number 1105-14 for a portable static roller to ESCO as the lowest bid, meeting all specifications, the amount of 75,950, and the funds to be budgeted for 2014, 2015 fiscal year.
This is a piece of equipment that you allowed budget for, for this fiscal year, and we put out four old bids, we did get two bids in, but only one of them met the specs that we put out, though if you have that tabulation in front of you, the lower breast one didn't meet all the specs, it's a lower quality roller, and so that's why we're recommending to purchase it at the 75,000, that still does fall within the budget.
What was the budgeted item? Do you have that dollar or not?
76, 77.
Yes, I think so.
And for the road and bridge department, is that?
Okay. We approve the awarding of formal bid number 1105-14 for the portable static roller.
Second.
Okay, we move in second to approve a formal bid for 1105-14 for the portable static roller to ESCO. Those in favor, show hands. That's is five zero. Those in favors, your hands. It passes five zero. Thank you. Item number 13 is a real estate sale. It is to consider an act upon approving amendment number one to the real estate contract for 2404 Southwest 6th Avenue. This amendment will extend the evaluation period and close with that.
Uh, I got a phone call from the Realtor for a company that's looking at purchasing this street property. And they're, they're needing more time to do their evaluation. And so that's what this amendment is. Um, it, it would move the evaluation period to February 20th until they had time to get out of it. And then if they accepted, it would be March 20th when we actually closed on that property. Uh, they, they had some delays with getting numbers back on contractors and the price and cost of everything. So that's why they're asking. Uh, so if you, if you approve this, it'll extend it. But if you don't approve this, it'll actually cancel the contract.
David, what was the current, uh, date?
It was December 18th is what they had, um, to, to close. That, that was the, what their current evaluation was. So that's why we wrote this amendment. If you approve it, then it extends. But if you don't, then it goes back to that February.
Make a motion to approve the extension date to February 20th of Sacar's 6th Street property.
Okay, so the motion is second to approve of the, uh, uh, 2404 Southwest 6th property to the February 20th. February 20th. Of 2015, 2015. Those in favor, go hands. It passes five zero. Okay. Item number 14 is insurance vehicle replacement. It is considered an act upon purchasing a 2015 Chevy Chevrolet Impala from Quadwell County Chevrolet in the amount of 19,945 dollars from buyer's contract number 430 dash 13. This is replacing 2014 Dodge Charger, uh, PC number 21579 that was towed by insurance.
Uh, this, this was a, a vehicle that was rear-ended, um, it's been about a month ago. But the insurance did total it. That was the other person's insurance that we're getting this check from. So the check they're going to cut to us is for 19,870 dollars and 19 cents. So the unfunded portion for this new vehicle is about 70, 75 dollars. So, um, if Carrie can let us take that from the insurance, I suggest that. And then, uh, they do have this unit in stock, so as soon as we get approval, we'll get a, a purchase order issued and get it back in service.
And what department did this?
Sheriff's Office.
And no one was injured?
Not on this one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the purchasing the 2015 Chevrolet Impala from Quadwell County Chevrolet in the amount of 19,945 dollars. With the, uh, portion of the insurance paid by the, uh, the vehicle that caused the accident, 75 dollars out of our insurance. Those in favor, your hands. Line zero pass. Don't let me answer it again. Item number 15, Road and Bridge Department. And it is to consider and take any action on appointing a new Road and Bridge Superintendent. I'm a little, uh, I guess we'll, uh, I'll let you kind of take that off, David. Explain the deal, what are we doing in regards to the appointment process?
Well, that's, that's why we, I was asked to put that on, so I put it on as general, in general ways we could. So you can consider how you want to go forward. Uh, Mr. Cumson is retiring, uh, as you know. And so in order to move that process, you know, I thought this would be an opportunity for you to talk how you want to do that going forward. So, I mean, in other words, you're not, you don't have, not asking you to appoint somebody.
Now, and, and let me just kind of throw this out. If, if the court decides they go through the appointment process in this terminal or in this interim, I'm starting to think about how the whole valley plays out as far as the employment sector with, uh, posting that position and allowing, uh, eligible, uh, participants to apply for it and be going through the process of interviewing. Like I've done.
That's Carrie, that's why I put this on, because it's, uh, I mean, certainly legally, you do not have to post. You can appoint somebody right now.
Can Kay, can you provide any guidance in terms of employment practices and posting a position? It is a directorship position, so I'd like to hear your insight from an HR director perspective.
Well, again, it's, it's strictly up to, um, the court. It's my understanding, um, from this, uh, i- agenda item that this is an appointed position. Uh, and if that's the case, you know, you certainly can just appoint an individual. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have to post a position. Although if you chose to do that, um, you also could, could move that direction. And I think that stays intent on, um, this agenda item is just to determine the direction that the court wishes to go uh, from this point forward in this replacement.
How have we, uh, in previous, you know, uh, and I know when we interviewed for the IT directorship, that was an interview process that we posted and allowed all the interviews to come in in the court. Uh, select few to be on a committee to interview. And then the final interview was for the whole court. Uh, that's how we've done things in the past. Is that different than we've, uh, that we'll be looking, doing now in the, in the appointment process? I want to make sure that we're not establishing precedence here. And, uh, and is that something that we might have end up with some issue with?
It's a, it's, it's a fairly unique situation. I mean, remember the one, one situ- one thing that was different about IT is you had a number of employees in the IT department itself that reached the employment line. So you really had kind of an obligation to, I mean, it was kind of the court, I assume, felt like they needed to go out of a pretty big debt in that situation. So I, I don't think you had that same situation at this part.
Okay.
But, but, but really, I'm, I'm not from a legal standpoint worried about y'all, uh, about setting any kind of a precedent that will come back and bite you later on. I think you can proceed however you want.
And I think the, the candidate that has been suggested is an excellent candidate, uh, Sebastian has done an excellent job throughout the years and certainly will be a, uh, an excellent, uh, uh, fill that role for, for the county. I just want to make sure that we're not slipping off on the, uh, we was platform here that something that could come back later and that we did it in this department and now you're posting it to another department. So I'll make sure we don't pretty solidly put anything.
If I could say something, please, you know, the IT department through all the years was the first time I'd ever seen where the Commissioner's Court was involved on the appointment of a department head. It's always fell under the direction of the commissioner that was in charge of this department that approved the recommendation to the court's comparison or to the one.
Well, in my opinion, that's a slippery slope to start, uh, moving down with really this inclusive format. At least my experience of what we use from an IT perspective, not only do we have internal, we had external candidates. And I'm trying to remember, Commissioner Philly, you said on that.
Yes, and also with human resource, we did the same thing. We did interviews, uh.
Oh, we did?
Yes. You sure did.
With the HR director. So that is a, a theme that we have followed. And I think it does make sense, in my opinion, for full transparency to post the position, um, to have one commissioner provide that recommendation. I think we operate pretty inclusively as a court and try to involve at least one other commissioner in that vetting out to bring a recommendation and obviously leaning on HR expertise through that process.
Commissioner Church, that you oversee that, that department, what are your thoughts with respect to that? What do you?
Well, I can understand where it comes from and, and appreciate that. I don't think it would hurt at all to, to spread a little bit of a net, see what came up. And I don't have a problem with, with, um, the recommendation that has come forward to this step. And, and I'd be pleased with that, but it, uh, it could make everybody on the court feel better, I think.
I'd like to have Roger, you struggled a little bit. Do you have something to say, Roger?
Well, I just, Sebastian has been with us down the other 20 years. And he has proved that he does have the ability to run that department. He gets along well with the people that other can. He gets along well for the Commissioner's Court. And I just feel very strongly that if you do not appoint, that you really going to lose it, didn't I? And as I said in that recommendation, I, uh, we never were there. And I just hope to make the right decision.
I, I agree with what you said as far as all qualifications and certainly Sebastian has shown that, uh, a number of times in, in a lot of states, the spokesperson photo raise in your absence. So I, I think he's certainly has, uh, paid his dues and, uh, to move right position. And, and I don't think by not appointing, that's what makes it clear. And putting that process out as far as, uh, vetting it out and, and posting it would necessarily eliminate him as the, the individual that would be chosen. So I, I want to make that clear, that, uh, you know, I would be dissuaded.
Putting this position, it was not, the court pushing it, it didn't go out. And I think I've done a very well job.
Yes, no argument there at all.
And you got Long Hills coming up, Sebastian is well aware of what's going on out there. I do something for you to think.
Uh, Chris Church, have you, uh, open any comments?
Well, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any problem, uh, putting Sebastian in that position. However, uh, to, I guess for transparency's sake, it might, might not be a bad idea maybe to do so.
What time, what timeframe are we talking about?
Nothing I have to.
How's that process, Kay, it's out as far as, let's just say we, uh, we posted a position. What are we looking at as far as, Roger, your last date is?
January 15th, a 80 day notice.
Okay. So let's say that the court decided to, uh, post a position, uh, today. Uh, how would that play out as far as the timeline and getting someone in that position?
Um, if we posted the position today, um, we couldn't get it into the, the papers. So if we wanted to advertise, um, in the, through the, the newspaper until next Sunday, um, would be the first time that it would run in the paper. Now, we could post it on some internet sites, our, uh, Welcome Partner, some of those sites, uh, immediately. Um, positions may be posted with a, a specific end date in mind. In other words, this, this court could say the position would be open until January 10th or until some specific date. Or alternatively, you could say open until field. And that would give you the ability to, to accept and field applications for a period of time, whatever length of time, um, you felt adequate. And then close the position, um, once you had an appropriate pool of applicants. Um, an interview process would probably take, um, a few weeks at least. Uh, and then it often would be extended and, and the position would be, um, filled independently from when that the selected individual might be able to, uh, fill that position. Um, if it were an internal selection, of course, that could take place immediately. If someone were brought in from the outside, you would be looking at, uh, two weeks to 30 day notice at a current employer. So a lot depends on how that scenario plays out. But at minimum, um, I would say two to four weeks.
I'd like to lean on Commissioner Church as, uh, this is your department. And if you feel like you're, you have a qualified man in position right now, I, I would not have any, 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 any problem going along with your suggestion. Well, I think it'd be tough to find an outside person that knows all of the situations out here on the county roads. I think Sebastian's done a great job. He's a, he's an excellent candidate. I can't see anybody applying that had beaten him, but, you know.
And it's, it's, and there's one caveat, and I agree with, uh, he mentioned internally. If we just posted internally, that sort of narrows down the amount of time, right, from the?
There, there would not be a time required for, um, that would be required with an external applicant who would have to give notice at a previous employer. Uh, assuming of course that the internal applicant would come from Road and Bridge. And I wouldn't, uh, couldn't imagine where else we didn't count it from.
And I'm, and I'm basically focusing on transparency. And if we went internally, that certainly gives a lot of transparency as far as opening up to all the candidates within the, the county. And certainly that hasn't been any, uh, negative amount of experience. Certainly, uh, Sebastian by far has the, uh, the most, I think, anyone on this court receives. But that certainly addresses the transparency issue and that we can look forward with that.
Yeah, I'd support an internal posting, um, really in an effort, again, to be transparent and that this court is not on a whim, just appointing. I think, again, we operated really with an inclusive format. Um, and we don't know, quite honestly, I don't know if there are other internal candidates that are interested. And in all fairness to them, what we experienced from the IT position is there were indeed. So we did want to provide a forum for them to raise their hand and say they were interested in that position.
I'd be in a timeframe for it.
It needs to be quick.
Just, just a couple of weeks.
Put a timeframe on it?
Uh, just within a couple of weeks, we could, we could post.
Put a date, uh, January, oh, by January, you know, 15th anyway. Maybe you can, maybe you can, I think that would be about the end of the year.
They don't know what it's about now. On what time?
We're scheduled to meet January 12th is our next court. So if we have an end date of, um, I would guess the 6th, January 6th, that provides time for an agenda item.
Okay, how does that, uh, how does that process work out? Be fairly, as far as determining that if January 12th meeting could. But does a committee need to be formed to, uh, interview if we had any candidates prior to that time?
If you were to follow the scenario that had, uh, been followed previously, that's, I believe, how we move with IT and from my understanding, HR.
So we could conceivably get this done and, uh, what a position by the January 12th, Commissioner's Board? If we did it.
It's possible, uh, depending on, you know, how many applicants we have. Uh, a lot would depend upon the, the initial end date that this Commissioner's Court puts on, um, that position vacancy. My recommendation, I, I echo Commissioner Church in that, um, that position end date should be, um,
In the moment.
Very, uh, soon. Because if any, any employee within Road and Bridge, I don't know whether they want to apply or not. Uh, you know, if they're, if they're interested, they should be able to get the application in quickly.
So, so do you also think what is the date as far as?
31st.
Yes, I, I move that we, uh, open the position for a department head of Road and Bridge Superintendent for internal candidates and that the application period end December 31st.
The second time.
Okay, uh, do we need to include if there is somebody that applies for interviews for that same day?
In terms of the committee?
In terms of committee. We do it the next week. Admit it, the committee, two or three people, three people.
It's two commissioners and HR director.
Okay, state the motion again.
I move that we, um, open the position for Road and Bridge Superintendent to internal candidates with an ending date for applications of December 31st.
And second?
I say.
Okay, so we move in second to, uh, open the candidates for Road and Bridge Superintendent and have an end date of December 31st for all interested actors.
Uh, might I recommend that we say mid on December 31st?
Noon, okay. By 12:00. Okay, those in favor, your hands? It passes five zero. All right, do we need to do anything else in regards to laying out any framework guidelines, appointing committees, uh, get this done today so it didn't have to?
Probably would be a bad idea to at least designate a committee in the second motion.
Okay, Commissioner Church would certainly be appalled at that committee. Uh, anyone else that?
I, I can do it, I can, yeah, I can do that. And Laura Kay, or say that we'll schedule the. I, I can do it. Yeah, I can do that, uh, in our K or say that we'll schedule those, uh, interviews for the, that afternoon, same afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, uh, item number sixteen, Potter County Projects, uh, to hear a report on various Potter County projects. It's in taking action necessary, Mike.
You have a report before you now, uh, the first page on the Santa Fe Elevator mod project. Uh, as of December the ninth, we started review on the, uh, bids that came in. We'll be hopefully bringing recommendation to you first meeting in January. The second page, Fire Station Six remodel project, uh, we have held our environmental, uh, walkthrough out there, so we're waiting on a revised proposal. Hopefully, I will have that reviewed and, uh, the entire project. The, uh, next one is Fire Station Three project. What I would like to do is, uh, turn it over to Commissioner Church and Commissioner Barnes and so we do to Commissioners assigned to that committee.
This one going to fire department?
Yes, Fire Station.
Fire station, okay. Uh, Pat, would you do one? In regards to the, uh, the, uh, the project about the fire station, uh, just give us a quick, uh, synopsis of, uh, of, uh, project. Time we left off, I don't know, we have made a couple of good questions, but just a quick synopsis, I think we can move from there.
Of what we are now?
Yes.
Um, we presented the proposal in last January of what we wanted to building, because of what we thought the building needed consist of and the sizing. Uh, that was January thirteenth, uh, we submitted it to the, um, architects. They did a, a drawing and an opinion proposal, opinion of cost for that, um, criteria that, that was laid out and presented to the Commissioners' Court on that day. Um, Commissioners' Court has purchased land, declared land now. Texas Forest Service assistance with that in Roden Bridge, so we had the land cleared. Um, and we came back to the Commissioners' Court with the opinion of cost. And what we'd like to do is have them go ahead and proceed forward to get the complete schematics, to get the complete construction documents done. And then we'll come back to court with that to, at another opinion of, of cost at that point. We'll come back to the court with those numbers, uh, on the timeline. I think I'll have the timeline in your packet if they manage to, if we stay with that. Uh, we'll come back to court. The current timeline would be to come back the end of April, probably first of May. Um, we would go out at that point with the approval from the court, we'd go out to bids, for a contractor to actually build it. And at that point, that's when we'd actually get the real cost of what the building's gonna cost us. And then we come back to the court for approval of that contractor's cost and then we proceed forward.
I'd like to just say that the committee meeting was very good. We aired some concerns, we, on both sides, I think, and, uh, I think that what we came out with as far as the committee, as a consensus of the committee, is to proceed ahead. And at this point, come back with a, an official architectural design and what the cost is actually gonna be. This whole process is gonna be at least a two-year budget cycle deal. So, um, at any time during this, if we, Commissioners' Court decide that we just can't go any further because of costs, we can do that. But I think the committee has pretty well spoken that we'd like them to proceed and, and see where we go.
I, I can tell with Commissioner Church and again, we want to focus on that at any time the court can call a timeout and revisit, depending on what, what numbers look like and, uh, if it be going in this direction. But it's been well vetted. I think that, uh, all the, the plans were laid out nicely. This is a project that the whole court wanted to be on board with, knowing the needs of the county, where we were going. And, uh, Patrick and Richard have done an excellent job of, uh, beating the bushes and ensuring all eyes were down in the team for costs to the degree that they had in their, uh, they're going to see as far as moving this project down the road. So I think it is, it's a good initial step as we process this forward. And let's just see where we are as we, uh, attempt to help this erected over, over land. And all the courts agree that this is a, a land with an, and an ideal location.
Harry, are you a member of the committee? Do you have any concerns with the dollar amount that was presented in terms of, uh, this initial phase? I'm, I'm struggling with what to call it just yet, 'cause I know we'll come back with the really true dollars.
I think, and that's why I would like us to, to come back with true dollars, because the amount presented wasn't really surprising. But I'm very confident they come back with the true dollars.
So once we have the completed design, the Commissioners' Court approves that design, you will have an opinion of cost at a hundred percent construction documents. The next phase after that, if you choose to move forth, is to go out and get bids. That's when you get your hard dollar cost not to exceed. And that's up to y'all if you choose to proceed forth from there.
And Mike, just to make sure I'm understanding the process, once we get the opinion of cost, uh, and I know we're talking about that it will come back to the court to be vetted out and, and really not everybody being a part of that, is there still an opportunity to look at those dollar amounts and look at that design and make sure that?
The design needs to be looked at, starting whenever I give notice to the architect to proceed on the next phase. It needs to be looked at for the next five, four, five months. That's where we need to go through.
And we don't have, uh, we're looking at that throughout the whole process.
What I'd recommend it to Pat is, once we actually got two construction documents is, is to have our respective Commissioners involved on this process. Commissioner, can you?
Fire. On fire.
We would go through that with you. When we hit like thirty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five percent, you're aware of where we're going through this project in order to reach that hundred percent design.
And so as a part of that, will the other Commissioners that are not part of this committee be briefed? I think what we learned through the first phase of this process was this was all very new information and the dollar amount and kind of the initial sticker shot. I, I just wanna make sure there is continuity of how we're being.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've already, uh, discussed that in our previous meeting that we call a timeout, just to go back over some things and ensure that we're all on the same journey. So absolutely, I like what you.
Do you have an architect picture for that in or?
Yes, uh, who's Markell Smith Cooper has been an architect for the last two years.
Think some of the things that surprised me, were, were new to me, not really surprised, but was the, um, all the things that are involved in this that we had to follow based on standards, regulations. And another thing that was surprising to me is that we have some very valuable equipment still sitting out in the weather that we have no place for. And, uh, we have to have them weatherized for the winter and we'd have a fire when we do it, take them out of policy. So I think there's, there's some real things that need to be discussed that, that we all, I mean, get behind.
Yeah, I'd agree with that comment, Commissioner Church, and I think the inventory, if you will, the fleet was really the tipping point, uh, from what I remember of the budget session that really caused the court to say, we need to start looking at these stations and obviously two being included in the report just today. So I think the inventory and the dollar amounts tied to that was really what the court let it out with some detail, uh, to start being aggressive in replacing some of these stations. So I, I would absolutely agree with that comment.
Okay. Any more questions from the courts? Mike, uh, is that all you have?
I've got another one.
As far as a fire?
No, on the fireplace, y'all have anything else? That's all.
Thank you.
The, uh?
I'm sorry, Dave, just to confirm, we don't need a motion to proceed anything along those lines, just reading the board. Okay.
The next due item, seventh quarter appeals, just to make you aware. I've already established a schedule with that, that will start, uh, the first week of January and run through probably the first week of February, starting this way. The, uh, next project is the County Ag Extension Restroom Boarding Project. Uh, what we need you to do is, we have a change order that has been requested on this project out there. The two restrooms originally through the flood project were, and replacing some other areas out there was, uh, never replaced. We have a cost summary to date of one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents to go into the two restrooms, remove the existing B C T top floor and base to replace it with, to match what we just recently put in.
And Mike, um, there are funds in the Building Repair and Maintenance Account for the Extension Office of five thousand plus, is that correct? That's what I was.
That is correct, a little over five thousand dollars we have sitting in the account right now. Uh, you can come back to move forth, we can take it from there. I ask that you please understand if I need, we run out of money, I'll come back to you later day for a question. We do need a motion on this because of contract.
I make a motion to approve the change order number one in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, funds to come from the Buildings Repair and Maintenance, Maintenance Account Extension Office.
Second. It's removed, just, just secondly, Mike. It's removed then seconded to approve of the, uh, project funds, uh, due to, do you have?
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor, show of hands? Okay, that's five zero. Thanks, Mike. Okay, item number seventeen, Potter County Extension Office, and it's to hear an, an agent update regarding activity hosted by the Potter County Extension Office.
All right. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all today and appreciate the collaborative effort that the county has with the Extension Service here in Potter County. I think it's a, a very good union and, uh, certainly worked to try and do a lot, a lot of good things. In my role as ag agent here in Potter County, I get to work with our ag producers that we have and also with our homeowners that we have here in Potter County on their needs. Um, I've got a few items that I'll pass around and share with you. You can take a look at it. I only printed one, but I can email a soft copy to you. Um, some of the activities that are covered in there that I've been involved with is we've done an awful lot dealing with the drought, uh, with our beef cattle producers and our, uh, range health with those ranches that we've, uh, got here in the county and abroad. Um, we've seen a lot of positives as far as those programs have come, a lot of, uh, uh, good things. Where we've talked about nutrition of the cattle, we've also talked about rangeland health, restoration, maintaining where we're at, hopefully improving to where we can, uh, some of the pasture and ranchland that was lost due to the drought can come back and have vegetation. Other things been involved, there's a little write-up for our P E D V program in swine, which was a virus that had a big, big effect on swine industry in Texas and nationwide as well. You probably saw it back in the spring with some of the prices of pork whenever you went to the grocery store. Um, we work to offer education of what that virus is. We work to offer education about biosecurity on the farm, uh, vaccinations and health, uh, protocol. We found it very useful. We had nearly two hundred people from not just here locally, our local producers make it. We had folks from Clear South of San Antonio come in, Colorado, Indiana come in for that event. So it brought a lot of people, uh, uh, into the community to get awareness of that and work to, uh, share knowledge and ways to, uh, uh, you know, be effective in terms of their management on their farm. Um, we just finished up the Amarillo Farm and Ranch Show, big activities with that. Extension always been highly involved, uh, with that activity. Um, this year, we went to have, uh, two dates of educational activities. Uh, with the new farm bill coming out, we did some farm bill programming, uh, one born in there. Uh, we did a program that just focused on wheat and we covered the A D S's of wheat and also covered some new technologies. Um, we have about sixty thousand, what's it, sixty thousand acres represented in that room of just wheat uh, and, uh, that farmers had. It was very, very educational for them, a lot of positive feedbacks. And then we've also, uh, in one of our other sessions, covered other commodities, corn, cotton, grain sowing, and tried to focus in on some new technologies associated, uh, with those. Now, with that said, that's a lot of ag programming, um, but we've also done quite a bit of horticulture programming here too. Uh, we've done programs on tree health, lawn care. Uh, back this fall, we finished up a, uh, gardening in the High Plains program where we kind of worked to showcase the how-tos and how to be successful of gardening, uh, here, whether that be lawn care or vegetable production in your, in your home garden. And we found it very, very useful. We had a really good feedback from that program, good evaluation results. Uh, from that program, we've got a lot of momentum built towards our next Master Gardener intern class. Uh, we're gonna hold that in January. I think probably about half of the folks that attended our program in the fall are planning on being in the intern class in January, so we're real excited with that. The Master Gardeners and myself have worked to develop a very good, uh, layout of class schedule that we think would be very useful to them and hopefully, uh, get a good group of interns involved and active in the community and active in the program. So that's a, that's a little bit, a real short, uh, brief synopsis of what I've been involved with this past year in terms of ag programming, also in terms of horticulture programming. Um, with that said, uh, I think our office has always been really good and jumping out and helping out uh, with, uh, the different program areas that we have, uh, whether it be family, consumer science, four H. We've been very good at supporting one another and helping one another out and look to continue that in the future. So that's, that's what we've got going on over there.
You got a lot going on, Lee.
It's been a lot happening, a lot happening, no doubt about it. We, uh, and we do, like I said, appreciate y'all's support and involvement, involving a lot of those programs and all the guidance y'all still give us as well too. We, uh, you know, try to be grassroots organization and keep the, the folks in the community, the folks in the county involved with it. And they have given us an awful lot of leadership with our program area committees as well.
Appreciate what you're doing there. So, please, do you have any other announcements?
Well, uh, I'm sure, uh, as you've, you've probably heard, Kyle Stewart, he'll be leaving us. Uh, he, uh, oh, he has what he feels is probably a better opportunity for him and his family. And whenever, whenever that happens, you can't blame, uh, blame a person for that. Um, but with that said, we will have an opening in our office. Uh, I think there'll be some interest in, in that position and I, you know, I certainly feel, uh, we'll be able to, uh, handle the void there as well and manage a lot of things. But, uh, it'll, it'll take a lot of juggling on our part until, uh, till that gets filled. Anyway, we'll certainly miss him for all of the, uh, work that he did and all the good things that he did.
Absolutely, and thank you for being here today. Uh, we put this agenda item on quarterly just to give an update. And Elizabeth, uh, was our last agent that came and gave updates. So I do think it adds a nice lens of those that are not involved directly with the programming. And I, I would also like to thank Commissioner Church, who I often lean on, uh, for Extension Office expertise. So thank you for being here and I know, um, there's challenging times with a couple of open positions, but I appreciate your leadership skills and stepping in and helping the office, so.
If we can help in any way, I mean.
Okay, yes, sir.
We can help with the twisting their arms.
We'll, uh, we'll make it through it. It'll be all right.
Okay, good, good.
All right.
Don't you need it?
All right, anything else? All right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, so noted, the court. Item number eighteen, formal bid number one one zero three dash one four is to consider an exit bond, avoiding formal bid number one one zero three dash one four, vehicle tires to various vendors as listed on the award notification sheet and to draw for ten tied.
and to draw for ten tied items. Funds will be used as, used on as, as needed basis from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year.
The, the past five years, we have been purchasing the county's tires through various contracts throughout the state. So either the state of Texas or, um, some other buy boards. Well, the state of Texas, for whatever reason, has discontinued their tire contract. And, and we don't know why. I've tried to get ahold of someone, but they're working on another bid. In the interim, I wanted us to put our own bid out because we do spend over fifty thousand dollars a year on tires. And so I do need to have some kind of bid in place to purchase tires off of. And so in front of you is a list of, of almost every tire that we could find that every department uses and we put that out to bid. We have three responders, um, and we're asking that you award the lowest responder provided. And we did have ten tied bids between the same two companies. And so instead of drawing ten times, I just figured we draw once and I'll apply to all ten of those line items. Uh, the, the two companies that are tied are Southern Tire Mart and Ocko. And so number one will be Southern Tire Mart, number two will be Ocko.
It's always so interesting that we draw.
Yeah.
Number two.
Number two, so the ten tied items will go to Ocko and I'll make, uh, if you decide to award it then.
Dave, just a quick question in terms of the purchase of the tires, what line item does that come from in the departments?
I believe it's their vehicle. Well, the sheriff's office has their own tire item, I believe. But all the other, um, all the other departments that'll come from vehicle are very big.
I move that we award the formal bid eleven-on-three-dash-fourteen, uh, for vehicle tires due to the various vendors listed. It moves in second to award the formal bid, various tire, various vendors, so noted. Uh, those in favor? Passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Item nineteen, is Texas Association of County's Health and Employee Benefits Pool. Is cast a ballot for election for, of prestige for the tag Health and Employee Benefits Pool and to authorize the county judge to sign off on behalf of the county.
Since we were, we had our help of LITAC, uh, they had board directors and so we went to vote. And so we got a ballot, which you should have copied out of the packet. And, uh, the options are for against the candidate, uh, or writing. And, I mean, I don't even know if it's necessary that you vote. Certainly can't. It takes a commissioner for the action, that's why we're.
So, we are voting for. Any one of these tables?
All, yeah. Or, or I suppose you'd vote for any or not?
Just the number.
Yeah, I forget any objections to somebody.
Do we have, uh?
Anyone know these people?
I know we have two number fours on there. Yeah.
Joshua Tackett, the district clerk.
Oh, no, yeah.
So, so we have five votes and we can use this for any one individual or list the five or any number of, uh?
The way it reads is please vote for all nominees. Vote for or against each line item. And it's due today by five.
So.
And again, if you don't want, I just didn't want to make that decision. I mean, you don't have to vote at all if you're today. You know about this.
But either the nominee sollicit, uh?
Initially, I thought maybe we shouldn't vote, but you know, if somebody volunteered to do this, we need to have board of directors. I'd say we vote for all of them.
I'd certainly vote for Ms. Kelly. I don't know what the.
I don't know. She has a good.
Well, I'll make a motion that we vote for all five and, uh, just to spark with this item. Okay, I second that. So it's been moved in and seconded to vote for all the listed candidates or nominees for, uh, Health, Health and Employee Benefits Pool, trustee, and those in favor. Okay, those opposed?
I'm gonna have a seat.
Passes four-zero-one. Item number twenty is Potter County Bail Bond Board.
Uh, every year, uh, you know, a lot of weird things today. Uh, a lot of, every year that, uh, one of the members of the bail bond board is one of the county court law judges. They, they alternate, so it's by kind of agreement. So Judge Roberts has served this year, Judge Sermon will serve next year, but the law says the commission court appoint that person. So they're asking, uh, the bail bond board is asking the court to appoint Judge Sermon to, to serve that county court law position on bail bond.
I'll make a motion to appoint Judge Sermon on the bail board.
Second, or a quick question, Dave, we've confirmed that she is willing to serve?
She asked the, it's, uh, she asked for that to be done.
Okay.
Okay, it's been, uh, motion and seconded to approve of the appointment of Judge Pamela Sermon as the county court law member of the bail bond board. Those in favor? Show hands, passes five zero. Uh, do you know if any of these statements, do I have anything that you didn't, okay? Jail report, I do not have a number in front of me, uh?
I can't, you know.
Okay, um, jail count is four hundred and seventy-nine, female population ninety, males three hundred and eighty-nine and zero inches. Okay, any county insurance items?
Yeah, I wanted to give you an update. I, I told you at the end of the last meeting that Constable Free had been involved in an accident. We, we got more details. Uh, both of those parties, um, were slightly injured. They both, they go to the hospital. They're both out and out. Um, and so we are currently working with the insurance company with the other driver. They were found at fault. And so we're, we're trying to get that work through. It, it's a little bit of an interesting situation because it was, it was a gentleman driving an Enterprise car. So we're dealing with his insurance that was covering the Enterprise car. And he's actually from Canada, so it's a little cross-country stuff that we're. But I, if, if the vehicle was totaled, which I, I think it will be, it was a two thousand and ten Tahoe, we probably will not get enough funds to cover an entire brand new unit. So just a heads up that when that comes back, there'll probably be some decisions that we.
Okay.
Probably we can have it on the back of the next. Hopefully, hopefully by the next court. And, and currently the hospital is driven on the right car that the other person's insurance is, is covered.
Uh, before we go to, uh, item number seven, are any other ten items to be posted for the court for next session?
Dave, I would like to, uh, have on the next session, this leads to Southern Independent League. We want to close that league to Miss Tucker and Southern Independent, so we can get that on for the next two tonight.
Sure. All right. Which leads us to item number seven, which is, um, mixed emotions here. Uh, is to recognize retirement of County Judge Arthur Ware, twenty-four years. Twenty-four years, that's, uh, a lot has happened in twenty-four years. Uh, this county took on a new makeover, lifted up where we had twenty-four years ago. Facility that we set in, uh, the Santa Fe Building. Along with any, uh, number of upgrades and to this county about the infrastructure and, uh, the leadership that Judge Ware brought to this county twenty-four years ago. We would have known that, uh, the type of, uh, enhancement and successions that we had in this county will come so far. But Judge Ware knew and coming out of, uh, serving this country very nobly and, uh, as a marine sergeant and, uh, tank sergeant, by the way, and, uh, he's one of the good wards. And, uh, he's certainly, uh, a lot of the country, this state, this county and, uh, this area. So, uh, it deals with mixed emotions as we presume as far as his moving forward and his retirement. Been blessed years to come with being happy and, uh, seven and eleven grand, outstanding wonderful time and knowing the legacy that, that Judge Ware has left and, uh, certainly goes without, without mention. So Judge Ware, if you would stand please and, uh, along with the court. And then I'm gonna ask also if our county elect judge would come forward and we, uh, pass on to show the legacy that, uh, Judge Ware has had. And be known by these presence that the county of Potter, state of Texas, wishes to acknowledge with sincere and grateful appreciation. Twenty-four years of faithful and dedicated service and exchange genuine best wishes for you moving forward and knowing that what you've already done is having this legacy intact and bold and then, uh, all of the residents and all of the, the workers of Potter County in this court, knowing that we move forward with all the things that you've already laid before us. And we appreciate you and, uh, love you for that and, uh, certainly all the things that go with this. God bless you, speed and, uh, have a great time. If I might, uh, to sign off, uh, we, uh, we wish Judge Ware in deporting, uh, for the judge of Potter County and all these great little years, pass the torch off to our newly elected, uh, Judge-elect Nancy Tanner as she assumes this gambling's position beginning next month.
Can I say?
So disappointed. I was hoping you were already done. Anyway, um, all kidding aside, you know, Arthur and I have been through a lot together in the last twenty years. And I think, um, for the most part, I want to thank you for teaching me, even if you didn't know you were teaching me. I watched you for twenty years. I listened to you. I responded to you and I thank you for that. For leaving me in a good, good position to start off with. So appreciate that. We both have seen and lost loved ones over the years. Um, we've lost a couple of commissioners over the years, but we became grandparents in the twenty years too. So, you know, life goes on, huh? So, we, uh, we've had tears. I used to have black hair. I don't anymore. We've had a lot of laughs and, uh, we've had disagreements, but we got through them. So with all that said, um, one thing remains and that's my love and respect for you.
Andy, if you'd come around please as the, the right arm of, uh, Judge Ware, I think, uh, finally. Andy, it's been the, uh, starwood and, uh, keeping Judge Ware. I want you to come back with the water. God bless you. I know you guys are probably getting ready on your annual trip to Hawaii.
Yeah.
And, uh, certainly we wish you all the best and that endeavor ends up. And, uh, certainly we appreciate you for being there with the, and all this. There goes that saying. And that's what a spouse is doing, uh, certainly know that you've done, uh, the, uh, the most job. And we appreciate you and all of you doing and being a part of this so twenty-four years too. God bless you and, uh, speed again. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we will, uh, call the Potter County Commissioners Court for the year two thousand and fourteen ended and wish you a very, very Christmas to all of you and from the family members out here and, uh, uh, blessed time and a happy new year for all of you. And, uh, be safe wherever you are and, uh, we will go again singing in two thousand and fifteen.